I'll call to order the meeting of Monday, May 11th. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Amos.
Present.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of April 27th. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem, Archibald. Is there any corrections, deletions, additions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We do have two presentations tonight. If the clerk would please read the first one.
Number one is proclamation observing the week of May 10th through the 16th as Police Week and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and this will be presented to Police Chief Michael Reeves.
If you'd like to join me over the podium, I will read it. Whereas the Congress and President John F. Kennedy signed Public Law 87-726 in 1962 designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week beginning on Sunday in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas the law was amended by the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994, Public Law 103-322, signed by President William Jefferson Clinton directing that the flag of the United States be displayed at half-staff on all government buildings on May 15th each year, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the Port Huron Police Department will honor Detective Sergeant Roy Shambloo, who was killed in the line of duty on October 10th, 1930, and all officers who have sacrificed their lives in the line of duty by wearing black morning bands for a 48-hour period beginning Friday, May 15th. Now therefore, I, Pauline M. Rep., by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Port Huron, and on behalf of councilmembers Amos, Archibald, Ashford, Harris, Lewandowski, and Ruiz, do hereby proclaim the week of May 10th through the 16th, 2015, to be Police Week, and May 15th, 2015, to be Peace Officers Memorial Day, and urge all citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Proud to present that to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
The second presentation, please.
The fifth grade DARE graduates Gabby Reynolds from Pearl School, Matt Monahan from St. Mary's, and Ashley Stevens and Drix Benavides from Cleveland Elementary will read their winning essays.
Gabby is going to start. She's one of the essays they wrote. Go ahead, Gabby.
Do you want to be a millionaire, successful in life, have your dream job, and maybe even be famous? Well, the possibilities are endless if you don't do drugs. And did you know that 100,000 people in Michigan have died from drugs just this past year? I suggest staying away from drugs and having a happy lifestyle. Well, that's what I've chosen to do. I have learned how to resist drugs in DARE. Some people think that it's okay to recreationally use drugs, and those are the people who didn't have DARE. I know now it's okay to have excuses for good reasons, such as saying no to drugs. I know to walk away from bad situations. I hope everyone has a chance to take DARE, because it's all worth it. The way I have used the DARE decision-making model is by discouraging my family members not to smoke or do drugs. Another way is by refusing to get into the car after the driver has consumed alcohol. Did you know that there were 299 alcohol-related car accidents this year that resulted in deaths? DARE has also helped me by thinking before doing. I do plan on using what DARE taught me in life. One definite thing is that I promise never to do drugs. Another is that I once by others do the same. In conclusion, taking DARE has taught me a lot. I had no idea what the consequences of drugs were before taking DARE. I also had no idea it could only take one time and the damage would be ill-avocable. Now, repeat this after me. Aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
Anita Ashford.
Promise never to do.
Promise never to do.
Drugs.
Drugs.
Or be involved.
Or be involved.
With anyone who does.
With anyone who does.
And will always promote.
And will always promote.
DARE.
Dare.
And say no forever.
And say no forever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now have Matt Monahan from St. Mary's.
What do drugs and alcohol have in common? They both make you live a shorter life. During the DARE program, I learned how to say no when someone asked me to go smoke or do some other bad things, like drink alcohol or do drugs. During DARE, I learned a lot about smoking. About 443,000 people die from smoking every year. If you are bi people that are smoking, get away from them as fast as possible. If you don't, they could ask you to smoke with them. Secondhand smoke is where you breathe in the smoke from cigarettes or tobacco around. Around 53,800 people die from secondhand smoke every year. 48,500 of those deaths come from heart disease and 2,300 of those deaths come from lung cancer. Marijuana is a drug. Some people think marijuana is not bad because it is a plant and human-grown. Buying marijuana from a drug dealer is a lot different than getting it prescribed from a doctor. That's called medical marijuana. Doctors sometimes prescribe medical marijuana for people who are very sick. If you use marijuana, it could lead you into trying other drugs, like cocaine. In 2012, about 750,000 people were arrested for marijuana. Almost half of the drugs arrests every year have been for marijuana. If you are in college and your roommate is growing marijuana, go tell someone so you don't get blamed for it. During DARE, I also learned about bullying. There are four main kinds of bullying. There are physical, verbal, cyber, and emotional bullying. Physical bullying is hitting, kicking, punching, or destroying someone's property. Verbal bullying is name-calling and teasing someone in a mean way. Cyberbullying is when you send mean emails or texts. Emotional bullying is when you spread rumors or lies or threaten people. I feel safer going into middle school and high school because I know how to say no to drugs and alcohol. I feel like I will be able to avoid peer pressure if someone asks me to go smoke or do drugs. I think I will also be able to help someone who is being bullied. If you use drugs or alcohol when you're playing sports, you won't be strong enough or fast enough. Your body starts to slow down and you get tired. I won't do drugs or alcohol because I know it's bad for you when you play sports. I play hockey, golf, and run track. I want to keep my body strong so I can keep playing sports. I will remember to say no to drugs and alcohol if someone asks me. I like to play sports. If I use drugs or alcohol, I won't be able to because I won't be as fast or concentrated as anyone. I plan to live my life healthy and safe without using drugs.
Good job. Good.
I can now have Ashley Stevens from Cleveland Elementary.
DARE. D stands for define. A stands for assessment. R stands for respond. Are you confident enough to make a good choice? E, evaluate. Did you make a good choice? Do you know how to recognize a potential problem? Are you up to a challenge or opportunity? Do you know how to recognize a potential problem? Are you confident enough to make a good choice? By using the facts and information that you know. Cigarettes are not good for your physical and mental health. They can make you get out of breath easy, then you can't run a lot. It could cause heart disease and sometimes make your breath stink, and your teeth might get yellow. DARE is important to me because it tells me facts about different things so I don't do these things in the future. Ms. Meinsberg told me the effects to these bad things. I think about what I'm about to do in the future and stop myself and think, is this stuff good for me or bad for me? That is my DARE essay from the heart. Remember, keep your heart running, keep your heart going and running safely.
Did you know marijuana can kill you and damage your youthful skin? Not only do you spend a lot of your money on it, you risk losing your job because of it. Once you try marijuana, you may not want to stop, not because it's addicting, but because it can make you feel more grown up. We're told not to do drugs because why would they tell us that for no reason? Well, for one thing, we may not get a good paying job, and anyway, who wants to be a walk, who wants to walk around like a zombie or a jobless zombie at that? What I'm trying to say is some drugs are bad for you. Did you know marijuana is becoming more popular and is one of the most used drugs today? Let me tell a few things that marijuana does to our bodies. Causes wrinkles, causes us to look older than we really are, higher risk of lung cancer, and a higher risk of a heart attack. Now, let's talk cigarettes. Cigarettes can do some of the same things as marijuana. Things like heart attack, lung cancer, rank old skins, and gray hair earlier in life. Let's say you're a 40-year-old smoker, and because you smoke, you look 50. Ugh, that's sad. Why would you do something that's going to make you die faster? People say life is short, so why purposely shorten it? And why risk the pain of lung cancer? My dad currently smokes, and I know he knows the risks he takes because he tells us. I'm sad through DARE I know what happened, what could happen, and I want him to know how much I love him, how much we all love him. And if you die because of cigarettes, we will all be hurt and lost without you. What does DARE mean to me? DARE has taught me lots of important things, things like what to say or do if someone asks me to drink alcohol, and how to say no if someone asks me to smoke cigarettes or marijuana. I've learned the effects drugs have on people and their families, how it can cause pain or end your life. So what does this mean to me? Lose your life or keep it and live life with your friends and family? DARE has been my favorite subject this year. Thank you for listening, Drix Benavides.
I do have a couple additions that I didn't know were coming.
That's perfectly fine.
So I have Chi Lee from Cleveland Elementary as well. They're a little nervous.
Why do people bully? People bully because they could have been bullied before, or they just want attention, or they just do it for fun. When you are bullied, the first thing you do is tell a teacher or an adult. These are some bullying names: physical, social, cyber, verbal, and mental. Responding to peer pressure. If someone is peer pressuring you to do something you don't want to do, tell a teacher or an adult. You should never peer pressure someone to do something. If I was peer pressured, I would walk away, don't see that person again, don't go to that area anymore, try to stay with people that don't do bad things, say no, make an excuse, and changing the subject. Signs of stress. Have you ever seen someone stressed? If you did, don't laugh at them. That's just mean. You should help them. Here are some ways to see if someone's stressed. It might be blushing, having stomach pains, or a headache and sweating palms. Smoking. There are 200 known harmful chemicals in cigarettes and smoke. Smoking leads to death. Almost 50,000 deaths per year can be by smoking. Smokers have more colds and upper respiratory problems. Smoking causes lung cancer, yellow teeth, bad breath, dry skin, cause of wrinkles, and heart disease. Tobacco. It is illegal to sell tobacco to people under 18. Each year, there are 40,000 deaths because of tobacco-related things. Tobacco reduces the amount of blood that flows to the brain. Chewing tobacco can cause mouth cancer, tooth loss, and other health problems. Alcohol. Alcohol is illegal for anyone under 21. There are 75,000 alcohol-related deaths each year in the United States. Alcohol is bad for you because alcohol goes directly to the bloodstream and can damage every organ in your body. Alcohol has bad consequences like loss of control, slows down the brain, poor judgment, memory loss, loss of self-control, and slow reflexes. These are some things I learned about DARE. But the best thing about DARE is doing DARE, because other schools don't have DARE. This is all possible because of Officer Meinsberg.
And this is Haley Lindsey from Cleveland as well.
Do you know how to say no to drugs and alcohol? Well, that's what I came to talk to you about. This year in DARE, Officer Meinsberg told us that in the world, each year, there are 75,000 alcohol-related deaths. There are over 200 harmful chemicals in cigarettes. I learned that from Officer Meinsberg, that after you start smoking or drinking, you could get addicted to it. That means that you could not be able to stop in smoking and drinking. Smoking is bad for your lungs and you can die from it. Also, I learned this year in DARE that alcohol weakens the heart muscles and reduces the amount of blood pumped in and from the heart. I also learned that alcohol can slow down the body and lead to coma and death. Did you know that nicotine and the cigarettes and tobacco reduces the amount of blood going to the brain? Smokers have more colds and respiratory problems. Also, Officer Meinsberg told us if someone is bullying you, you can go to school early and talk to the teacher. You can also wait until after school when all the students are gone. If you don't feel, if you don't want to tell your teacher, you can tell the principal or another adult that you are comfortable talking to. DARE stands for Drug Abuse Resistance Education. I will use everything I learned in DARE this year to make good choices in middle school. I know that there will be peer pressure, but because of DARE, I will stay drug-free.
Those are all our essays for tonight. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. Thank you to you, too. You didn't introduce yourself, but that's okay. Officer Adrian Meinsberg, and she does a wonderful job with the DARE program, so thank you. And all of the students, you did a wonderful job with your essays. I've gone to a lot of your DARE graduations, and I'm impressed with what you have to say there, and just your demeanor and everything else. And I know you've learned some very valuable things. Just remember to keep it with you, and you are our future generations, so you've learned some very positive things. Just keep up the good work, and I think we should give them all another round of applause. We will, by the way, have some certificates for all of the students. We weren't sure exactly who all of them were coming tonight, so we will make sure that perhaps you can deliver them to their schools, if that's okay? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else on council who would like to say anything? Yes, Councilmember Ruiz.
Having watched about, I believe, 17 graduating classes over the years at various schools and four different DARE officers, not counting you, I'm a firm believer, and I'm proud of the city of Port Huron, that we still offer this program to our fifth graders and the quality teachers that are also here tonight, and parents. There's nothing better than a DARE graduation when the parents are there, even if they happen to have their own child telling them that they should stop smoking and those kinds of things. It's an invaluable program, and I'm a firm believer, and I hope it continues for a long, long time. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say that I enjoyed everyone, and Gabby, your enthusiasm, it just sailed over everywhere. And the little heartfelt, the little young man that talked about your dad, I hope he stops smoking. So I'm with your son, so you got my vote. And just everywhere, I hate to call names, but even the little kids here, I didn't take everybody's name, but you all were heartfelt, and that's what we need to see. And I heard you mention Officer Meinsberg's name a lot of times, and we need strong role models in your lives. And so I am glad that you're there and that we're able to provide this for our students throughout the city of Port Huron. So you're doing a fantastic job, because if we don't put on the brakes and try to make the difference in these kids' lives, they can go anywhere. So I'd rather see us doing something like this than rather just taking it for granted, you know? So I'm sure these kids know how to say no and know how to say it real loud. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Thank you. We'll move on to public hearings.
Number one is to hear comments on the proposed capital improvement program for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening on public hearing number one, which is relative to the proposed capital improvement program? Seeing no one, I will declare public hearing number one closed and move on to public hearing number two.
Number two is to hear comments on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2015-16.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the council tonight on public hearing number two on the proposed budget for 2015-16? You can come to the podium. Just please give us your name.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Manager Freed. I'm Larry Warren, Secretary for the Port Huron Professional Firefighters Local 354. I represent a group of loyal firefighters that have protected the city of Port Huron for the past 82 years. We share your passion for the city of Port Huron and realize the city is on the brink of a financial crisis, and because of this, you all have a difficult decision to make. City manager has presented our local with two options on how to save between $500,000 and $600,000 out of the next fiscal budget, neither of which were very palatable to the union. The first was offering early retirement to our top five firefighters and not replacing 126 years of service they represent. The second was to eliminate the bottom eight guys in seniority who range from four to nine years on our department. They've recently bought homes, started families, have young babies at home. So out of these two options, protecting the lifeblood of our fire department seems like the better choice for us. That being said, the fire department has already lost 31% of its employees in the past decade. These five positions will push us to a 40% loss rate. During this past decade, we have continued to give the public the delusion that everything is normal and nothing has affected the service that we deliver. However, we're at the proverbial tipping point, where we can no longer hide the fact that service will be reduced. When I say the service will be reduced, I don't mean by just not running on medical calls. The operational plans have yet to be decided, but in addition to fires and medical calls, your fire department is highly trained in hazardous materials, confined space, high-angle rescue, as well as trench and structural collapse. These specialty disciplines, as well as firefighting, are laborious and time-sensitive, meaning we need additional manpower, and time is our enemy. The longer it takes to either get personnel on scene or for the scene personnel to complete our critical tasks, the more unstable the emergency becomes. If we remove firefighters from our response, it means it will take longer for the firefighters on scene to complete these critical tasks that are required to mitigate the emergency. These increasingly unstable events now become more hazardous to our staff and our citizens alike. These dangers will require our firefighters to make a more detailed risk-benefit analysis on even the seemingly routine calls. Make no mistake, the members of the Port Huron Fire Department will continue to perform at the best of their abilities, but quite candidly, any loss of staff will affect the ability and reduce the services we are able to effectively offer. We, as a union, are willing to provide you with any information that you require in making this difficult decision. Our goal is the same as yours, to provide the best possible service to our citizens. Again, speaking from the heart, we love this city as much as you guys do. It just feels like we're taking another hit that is going to affect our service. We just can't sustain doing the things that we've been doing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening on public hearing
Marcus Middleton. I have to commend Mr. Freed for at least stepping up and saying this is where we're at. We've elected quite a few, for quite a few terms, and it's surprising me every time I turn around that we're continuously having to make cuts, we're continuously have to raise taxes here, or some form of fee that we do not know about as a taxpayer or resident. I would like to know, when does this stop? What has happened to where, what, three years ago, before Mr. Freed came in, we were all good, or we were told it was all good? Was this just whitewashed? You know, all of a sudden, now we're cutting the firefighters? I'm against it. Police Department, I'm against it. There's other options out there. I would like to see Mr. Freed dig a little bit deeper besides making these cuts, but I have to commend him for at least stepping up and saying this is where we're at.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
My name is Brad Creamy. I've been a citizen here in Port Huron for about six years. You all have very tough jobs here tonight. I appreciate the prayer that was said here tonight. I appreciate the fireman that stood up here and was, is sticking up for his man. The thing that I wonder about, the thing that brought me to the meeting tonight, is I looked out in the crowd here, and I expected, quite honestly, to see a lot, a lot bigger crowd here. The thing I'm wondering about is the communication process, and I know that you guys have put it in the paper, you're trying to communicate to citizens of Port Huron. Can there be more? I guess I'm challenging you, can there be more? Especially, I think I heard there's going to be a $35 per resident charge for garbage pickup. Can there be more to communicate these things? Give the time, give the community a time to react? If it has to be done, it has to be done. I think Mr. Freed is trying to look at all the angles. It's real easy to be critical. I don't want to be critical, but the only thing that I still would like to challenge councilmembers of, are we communicating? Are we doing the best job we can to communicate with the people out here? Instead of getting the bill next, whenever they're going to start that, in the mail, everybody's going to freak. So that's my only comment.
Kathleen McCready, 4014 14th Street, Port Huron. I would like to speak to the $35 fee to restore the garbage fund. 3.1% on water, 3.1% on sewage this year, plus a $35 garbage fee for the year. I would like you to go back and dig a little deeper and find another way, because to slap on, I'm sorry to use that term, but to have a fund in dire straits and, oh, we can just, you know, maybe we'll ask for another $35 fee, on top of the water service fees we had last year, and the sewage service fees we had last year, and it's set in the budget to restore the fund at least in the near time. So this $35 might not be enough. And the next year, you're going to ask for more, and this is in a multi-year contract. And I can't go find another provider, because the Marquette contract has a couple more years on it. I lost my job in December. I was fortunate enough to get a job, a very good job, and this is going to take everything that I've gained, plus which, the time that I was out of work. The neighborhoods are suffering. The neighborhoods are suffering. The blade department is trying to make a difference, trying to look for the future, but there's been no plan to provide for where our neighborhood should go in the future. So I would just ask that you go back, take another hard look, and I understand the loss to the fire department, that's a huge loss. I reread the budget today. I see that in the future that that will not be restored, that once those employees are gone, that that budget is reduced by that amount of dollars and in the next, on the future budgets, at the end of the budget, it's not going to be restored. So there's a hard road ahead, but I would ask you to please, maybe the thirty-five dollar fee would be better imposed on the public in another area, something. But, you know, there comes a time when we don't have any more money. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Toppling night to you, my name's Ben Matthews. I'm wondering if in your budget, do you have it in there for civil lawsuits that are going to be brung against this town for the police state that's being ushered in upon us citizens? We're being stopped, questioned, walking down the street illegally by the police department. We're being pulled over by the police department illegally. Do you have it in your budget for the lawsuits that will be brung against this town? It's not right to be able to just walk down the street and be stopped, because you have a massive program going on that also involves the federal government. As I look out this window, our Border Patrol agents are at stand-down from the Obama administration, but yet we apply these Border Patrol agents into this operation. I have watched helicopters fly over this town. I have done my investigation and found out that there's TSA imaging this town. Do you know about this? And how much money is it costing us taxpayers? And how much money is it going to cost us in Ed? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening on public hearing number two relative to the budget?
I'd like to add to the fine gentleman from the firefighters' unions.
Could we have your name, please?
Stephen Werner. We know that families and especially businesses come to a place for a myriad of reasons, but among those reasons is an effective and efficient fire department, able to put out fires and save lives quickly. By cutting these people from the fire department, we will actually be harming the future prosperity of our town, because those businesses and those families will not be coming here, because they will note that our fire department is ineffective and inefficient because of these cuts. How are we going to offset that? I really don't understand why we would want to do that to harm our town's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Council members, Sharon Bender. I live on South Boulevard in Port Huron. I was wondering if there is any other way that, the firefighters are already trained, they're magnificent. We have a group of professional people that have the training to go into a home, to help a senior citizen, to respond in many times cases even before an ambulance arrives, to help that person. Is there any way that we can possibly work with the other agencies that respond, that we can keep our firemen? In other words, with the training that they already have, not, they're not just manning a fire station, they're doing all kinds of other things as well. And I really think we need to look at that. I would be willing to pay that thirty-five dollars and forego recycling, because I'll go to recycling centers anyway, rather than lose our firemen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening on public hearing number two relative to the budget?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, City Manager Freed.
If I could say something. In response to Mr. Warren's comments, everything he said is true. We will have to reduce services to be able to operate in a different model. I believe we can find a model that operates us in a fire-safe community, but there are auxiliary services and support things that our fire department does that, quite frank, we will have to look at, because we will not have the manpower to continue our current model of operations. One thing I also want to point out is the, the fire department has led the way in concessions since well before I got here. Previous managers have told me since beyond 2006 that when the economy took a hit during labor negotiations, the fire department was the first one to take the lead on paying more in to pensions, taking concessions in healthcare costs. And so I want to publicly thank the fire department for leading, not just this year. I know you're taking a hit, but I know for the last almost a decade now, you guys have led concessions and led the other employees on reducing our long-term liabilities, both in our OPEPs and our retiree healthcare costs. You pay more out of your pension, and you pay more for your healthcare cost, and you've had stagnant wages. And you've done that without compromising service to the people of this community. And I want you to know that when I made this budget and proposed to council, it was extremely difficult, and I thought about your families. I did. And that's why I proposed, instead of layoffs, we'd spend money to do buyouts, to protect the next generation. I look forward to discussing this with the council during the budget session, but I did think it was important to note the sacrifices and the leadership that our fire department has demonstrated for years.
Seeing as we had no one else on public hearing number two, I will declare public hearing number two closed. We'll move on to public hearing number three.
It's to hear comments on the tentative budget for the Port Huron Downtown Development Authority for fiscal year 2015-16.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening on public hearing number three relative to the Downtown Development Authority budget for 2015-16? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number three closed. We'll move on now to public comment time. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council on any other item, they can come to the podium, give us your name, and you have four minutes.
Good evening to our mayor and our councilperson and the councilpeople. My name is Raymond McCoy. I wear two hats. I'm the president of RM International Resource Group, which is a local business. I'm also Dr. Raymond McCoy. I'm the pastor of El Cana Living Worth Center International. Reading in the Times Herald this morning, I noticed where Port Huron was going to acquire more office space in a building here, am I correct? I'm here to make an offer to you. My customer is Dan Gilbert, Quicken Loans, Bedrock Realty in Detroit. They have given me two hundred and fifty workstations, probably twenty private offices, maybe a hundred office chairs and product that can be used in an office setting. I don't know if this is the right venue, but I was in Detroit all day today, and I didn't have time to come back to my office. Carl Albert is my strategic partner, so I didn't have time to put together a formal presentation with pictures and things of that nature. But however, if this is the right venue, I would like to offer Port Huron office furniture for free, because it was given to me for free by Dan Gilbert. So if you're the right venue, I don't know how we can move forward with this, but I just read in the paper that you're going to acquire some offices, and you might need some furniture, I don't know. But I'm here to make an offer to you.
It's actually space that we have in this building that someone else is going to lease from us. So, but as far as any offer that you might have, you really should meet with the city manager, James Freed.
I would love to hear about your free stuff.
If you, do you have a business card with you or a number that he can get ahold of you?
I'm going to give you my contact information. I have a brochure that I can give to you, and you can pass it on to the right person, and they can contact me. I was told today by them that you're moving expeditiously to get this furniture out of the building in Detroit, so I just want to let you guys.
Well, thank you for your offer, and Mr. Freed will get back in touch with you.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Love you too.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening under public comment?
Ben Matthews again. I was a little nervous the first time, this is my first time ever doing this, but I do got concern with what's going on with the police activity in this town. I want you to understand that we do have civil rights. We come a long way in this country. This country, this, this town is a melting pot of beautiful people, and just to be pulled over to hope that one of yous was drunk driving, or one of yous have a felony warrant for your arrest, that's not the way we conduct business in the city of Port Huron with our police department. I wouldn't have been here today, but I called my city police department to discuss this matter at hand, and I was told this, get used to my civil rights being violated. No, get used to me being in your face, because I'm not, you don't, when you call your police department to voice your opinion about certain things, and they tell you that, that's alarming to me. And I don't know if you know about J. Helm, you can Google this. If you don't know about J. Helm, you might be surprised what's going on in this country. And this, to me, when I'm witnesses, is a little J. Helm. This is not Baltimore, this is not Ferguson, and we're not going to turn into that. We're racial profiling, that's exactly what we're doing. We're hitting the low income, low-income part of town. There's no drunk drivers at the north end, there's no drug abusers at the north end. Why are we up there doing these stops and pullovers up there? Why are we only focusing on certain areas of this town? We're racial profiling. Thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening?
Hello, Paula.
Hello.
Mayor Rep., members of council, Ms. Freed. My name's Bob Slattery. I'm the, a past president of the Michigan Municipal League, former mayor of the city of Mount Morris, and I'm also a representative of the Transportation Asset Management Council, Michigan's Transportation Asset Management Council. And it's in that capacity that I am here this evening. That's the group, by the way, that is made up of representatives of cities, villages, townships, counties, regional groups, MDOT, all the transportation, all the road owners. And they're, they're the group that goes out and rates your roads every year to tell you just how bad they are, along with all the rest of the roads in this, in this state of ours. At any rate, I'm, I represent the Michigan Municipal League and the city of Port Huron on that asset management council. And as I say, that's why I'm here today. One of the things that we do at the asset management council, and that we've done for the last, several of the last ten years that we've been doing this, is to present awards to individuals and to agencies that champion the principles of asset management. Asset management, just in a nutshell, is doing the right fix out on your roads, the right fix at the right place at the right time, focusing on preserving the roads that are still fairly good. So we want to recognize the agencies and the individuals that are really promoting that and championing that. Well, once a year, we have a conference, actually twice a year, once up in the UP and once in the lower peninsula. We had our conference last week. And at our conference last week, one of the award winners was Mr. Bob Clegg. And Bob was unable to attend that conference, but I told the, the council that it was important enough for us to come to Port Huron and make that presentation to Bob here in, in his home. So that's why I'm here to do that.
Maybe you'd like Bob to join you.
And Bob, would you join me up here, if you would? Now, I've known Bob for a long time. I, as I mentioned, was president of the Michigan Municipal League, and during that stint, and probably from about 1995 until about 2005, I chaired a committee at the MML on transportation, infrastructure, and environmental affairs. And Bob was a key member of that committee during that whole time. And he, his professionalism, his passion, his knowledge of his profession, and the contributions that he made to his community and to all the communities in Michigan, really earned him the respect of everyone on that committee and in the Michigan Municipal League and throughout Michigan. So at any rate, when we looked around this year to who, actually, he was nominated to receive this award, and so I, it's my pleasure and my privilege to be here tonight to give this award, to present this award to Mr. Clegg. And this is the, this is what, what would have been presented and said at the award. Robert Clegg has been assessing roads and performing asset management for transportation-related infrastructure since before asset management and the Pacer ratings, which you're probably familiar with, the Pacer ratings, became a household word. He was even rating infrastructure before pavement management became a buzzword. Since then, Bob has been with the city of Port Huron, and he's rated the roads several times using the county's GPS equipment under the state guidelines for Pacer ratings. He's also utilized Pacer ratings to help identify areas to keep your multimillion-dollar combined sewer overflow project on time and under budget. So I would like to present to Bob Clegg the 2015 Carmine Palumbo Award. Now, Carmine Palumbo was the chairman of this committee from the very beginning, and he stepped down recently to take on additional responsibilities as the deputy director at SEMCOG. And in, in his honor, we named this award, and we want to, Bob, to be the first recipient of the 2015 Carmine Palumbo Award. Bob, thank you for your outstanding achievements and your contributions to asset management in Michigan.
Thank you very much. Well, this is a great honor, and I thank you, Bob. It is, it has been a passion of mine, infrastructure. As I keep telling everybody, and they won't listen, sewers are sexy. And infrastructure is important. But thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Bob, for coming to Port Huron and giving him that award tonight. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening?
I'm Maynard Little. Eight twenty-two Wall. I've been here all my life, and I've got one thing to say. You keep raising bills where you can't get money, we voters can pull the property tax when they come up. And if you want that, we will do it. I've got that much to say. And we're paying property taxes for taxes all our life. We can pull that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening under public comment?
My boat, I live in Fort Grashit, but I spend most of my time in Port Huron, as most of you folks know. Concerned sting operations that we're having, I believe we should have more, okay? I was chastised several years ago by the ex-police chief for using some terms, okay, for folks. So now I guess my new terms are, Port Huron, we have a lot of low-income people, okay? We have a lot of lowlifes, okay? And the only way we're going to get rid of lowlifes is if Chief Freed keeps on doing what he's doing. Let Port Huron be known that if you're going to hang around Port Huron and you're a lowlife, okay? okay, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be around here very long, okay? You do that, that's gonna increase, I know, everybody knows I'm a landlord, okay? You get rid of the lowlifes in Port Huron, you get rid of the lowlife landlords, and you get lowlife, you get rid of the people that don't belong in this town. Does that make any sense to you? Okay? Keep the stings going, okay? More, I'd like to see more, more and more and more. Because if you're not doing nothing wrong, you don't have anything to worry about, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening under public comment? I declare public comment closed, we'll move on on our agenda to city manager, from the city managers, number one, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I moved too fast, consent agenda. Bypassed the whole thing. Uh, I need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support. Mayor Pro Tem Archibald and council member Ashford.
Mayor Rep., could we take resolution six off of consent?
Number six?
Yeah, please.
Okay, we will take the vote on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, the items on the consent agenda that were approved was receiving and filing the quarterly financial report for the nine-month period ending March 31st, 2015, approving the vacation of Poplar Street Right-of-Way located between Kearney and Lincoln with reservation of full width public utility easement, approving vacation of portion of Alley 73 between Poplar and Elk with reservation of full width public utility easement, confirming and approving single lot special assessments for the cost of demolishing dangerous, dangerous structures at 2008 7th Street and 1503 Howard Street, confirming and approving single lot special assessments for snow removal in the right-of-way, and approving the reappointment of Irene Michaels and Sandy Poltowitz, and the appointment of Patricia Frank to the sister city commission with terms to expire April the 12th, 2018. And now we will go on to, from the city manager, number one.
Is accepting the bid from C.N.L. Asphalt Paving in the amount of $6,300 for asphalting the basketball court at Palmer Park Recreation Center, and it's to be paid with, for using grant funds received from the Youth Voice Grant of Southeast Michigan Community Foundation and the Youth Advisory Council of St. Clair County Community Foundation.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember Harris.
I guess, just, just one question here, I know the, uh, acceptability of the Hess Asphalt Company and how good a job they do, and, and this company just don't seem to be familiar, I wonder if we have any background on C.N.L. Asphalt.
Do you want Mr. Clegg to answer that one?
Mayor Rep. and council members, yes, I believe they've done work for the city in the past.
Okay, good.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember Ruiz.
Have we, um, will they do the total project, or does the city employees do any of the prep work?
Um, city, there are city employees doing prep work, uh, getting the grade prepped and so on, and I think their parks employees working for Nancy primarily.
Because that didn't fall under their, their bid?
I'm sorry, no, that, that work did not fall under their bid. Specifically, what we are looking for is someone to come in and place the asphalt, and Nancy worked out, uh, how much grant funds she had, and she had some staff. One of our engineers came out and worked with them and made certain grades were right, and they had prepped it properly, so that when the asphalt company comes in, uh, they can slip in and get it done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Clegg while he's up? No, thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, we'll move on to item two.
Is accepting the unit price bid from Detroit Salt Company in the amount of $55.05 per ton for early and backup delivery of salt.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Amos, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember Lewandowski.
Price of salt's up quite a bit this year, Bob?
Mayor Rep. and council members, it is up a little. It's up 5.24 percent from last year's bid. The year before that was up 27 and a half percent. So, um, tough winters result in higher salt prices. It wasn't quite a severe winter last year, but it was still a pretty tough one, so we're still seeing prices a little higher.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Clegg?
Is this the, sorry, Mayor Rep., is this the time we usually put in our bid for it, like, at this particular time?
Yes, um, we find that if we can get our bids out early, um, we get a little more competitive pricing. Some of those communities who wait a little later, uh, sometimes are getting a little higher prices, um, and so we've been trying to, to go in early spring if we can.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, item three.
Is recommending denial of the request by the property owners to remove the sidewalk on three vacant lots in the 2500 block of Wright Street.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Harris.
Uh, on one of my excursions over the weekend, I took a walk up there and I can understand the property owner's issue with the sidewalk, and, uh, because his property backs up the street up there.
Yes.
Can they speak to it, or?
Um, well, the time to speak would have been during public comment, but are you the ones that put the request in?
Yes, I thought, we thought it was that.
We thought it was now, but.
No, well, um, if the council doesn't, if there's a question for them, I don't.
Yeah, I have no objections, if we need to call on them, they can.
Yeah, if the council has a question of you, then we'll allow you to come up, okay?
My, my only comment was, in their addition that was brought to the city council, is the fact that, you know, pretty much everything they said is, is correct, there are places that don't have sidewalks and things like that, but the, I guess the one connecting thing up there is the people on the, the one corner on Wright Street and the people on the other corner on Wright Street have sidewalk and are repairing theirs, and it's, it is a, a situation that, uh, might, we might need some support from our city engineer, maybe tell us what.
Trying to get a map.
By the difference.
Madam Mayor and council, if you look, you can see their properties. And continuation across the blocks as well.
So if someone were taking a walk and going down that, they would not have a sidewalk for that stretch?
Correct, correct.
It's unusual in the city. Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember Lewandowski.
Because we'd have to ask how the other sidewalk on the other side of the street got, was allowed to come out then, or was it never put in?
Don't know.
I didn't see it there.
Based on the other side of the block, it's also not there as well, but there's a continuation of the sidewalk system on their side of the street, even across both cross-sections. That's why the planning department recommends denial.
Mayor Rep., we've, we have had some sections, I think, where we've allowed that sidewalk, and in fact, when that happened, I thought to myself, especially in the months of the winter when I have to clear my own sidewalk, I'd like to get rid of mine. But I didn't drive around and I saw that there's not a consistency all the time, sometimes it doesn't make any rhyme or reason, I look across the street, there's no sidewalk. I, we have it up and down our block, the next block does not. It's tough to, uh.
With, what's typical in, when you've typically approved the removal, there hasn't been continuous sidewalk adjacent to the properties, whereas this is different because there is north and south of property. And the previous ones that you have approved, there would just be a section of sidewalk in front of their home and no, and no place else. Um, it, it gets tricky because per ordinance, the maintenance of the sidewalk falls back to the property owners. So if this were to be, you know, essentially overruled, um, anyone who had maintenance on their sidewalk would just petition to have it removed. That's the, that's the overarching concern.
May I ask if he, they were to remove the sidewalk, who would pay to have it removed?
They would have.
They would have.
They would have to, yeah, have it removed.
Then you would have a gap in our sidewalk system.
Mayor Rep. Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald.
Can I ask what the reasoning is that they want to have it removed?
Go ahead and come to the podium, because you obviously did not realize that was the time, so I will allow you to answer that.
Be careful. Yeah, I'm sorry, we didn't realize what the protocol was.
That's okay.
But basically, uh, we wanted to remove it because it is, it's not really a sidewalk, it was a sidewalk 60 years ago when I was a kid in that, sorry, in that neighborhood, but, uh, it's now just a bunch of broken slabs of cement, and we feel that if the, the area, which is an improving area with the convention center and all of the, in the new Doubletree Hotel, would be served, uh, very well by just making it a nice green space and landscaping it, as opposed to putting in sidewalks, which, um, I, I think are problem for the homeowners, um, uh, in any event.
Yeah, it, it just makes it look a lot better. Uh, and, and it, one other thing is that not only, um, is there sidewalk, uh, on the other side of the street.
No sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk right there on Church Street, down there on that side, there are many places. And, and in fact, a little bit further down on Armor Street.
2600.
The sidewalk, uh, on, on the, I guess it'd be the.
West side?
West side of Armor Street, north of, of Church.
It's, as you described, basically, there's the start of a sidewalk and there's maybe 100, 20, 150 feet where there is no sidewalk, and then the sidewalk picks up again, and I guess I agree with the person who commented, there doesn't seem to be a rhyme or reason for where there are sidewalks and where there aren't sidewalks, and perhaps the whole community would be served if we, there was some sort of consistent plan. Um, it is our consensus that we just figured out after we were given 30 days in December of 2014 to replace a sidewalk, which you don't do in the middle of winter, that had we thought about it over the course of the last few years when we've been remodeling, we could have just let the dirt go over the sidewalk, and I don't believe anyone would have known. Um, serious, quite serious about that, and the fact that it's broken and crumbling and probably only sys.
Yeah, in conclusion, I would say that we would remove it and regrade it so that it would be not an obstruction or a safety issue.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Mayor and council, although I appreciate the comments from the homeowners, you have a section of sidewalks that has continuous sidewalk on north and south side, beyond the part that is simply failing, and I understand it's inconvenient to repair it, that was the intention of the ordinance. It is different from prior approvals to remove sidewalk where there was no sidewalk on either side of the homeowner, this is different. This is clearly a part of a continuous system. Um, I would highly recommend that, uh, you keep with the denial, because if you overturn it, you will have, all, we have sent out letters for sidewalk repairs and you'll just have people petitioning to re, remove their sidewalks for the same reason other than it would look better if they graded over. So I said, I think this would set a very dangerous precedence, uh, I don't know how you would ever enforce a sidewalk ordinance moving forward.
Mr. Freed, the, the places where we've done this before and allowed that to happen, are we 100% sure that there was never sidewalk before, that it wasn't overgrown and others removed because of?
I would have to look at each case.
I guess that would be more like, do we actually have a, a, what would I say, a log that shows every sidewalk in the city of Port Huron?
Bob, do you, anything you'd add to that?
Mayor Rep. and council members, it really comes down to continuity. A system is, it doesn't have continuity. And in this particular case, if you follow, if you go to the south, if, if you bring this, move the, uh, the view to the south, this system comes down and eventually comes down towards the public, uh, walkway. And then if you go, if you pull that to the south and go north, it goes, extends up into the neighborhood. And what has happened in the past is there have been cases where we've had isolated two and three, uh, will have, let's say, a 50-foot lot with sidewalk in front of it, but no sidewalk on either side of the 50-foot lot. And those discontinuous areas is where council has approved them. And where there's been continuity in sidewalks, uh, typically those are repaired and replaced and it's kept. Certainly, it's, it's the council's policy. It does have a challenge, however, in that the pu, the movement today is for more walkable communities, and the challenge is that we have areas without sidewalks, not that we have areas with. And so the question would be, would there be a time that, um, there would be a change in that movement, in a movement to add sidewalks where they don't currently exist? I don't know, I can't answer that question. But I do know where they are contiguous, traditionally, we've kept them. And I think, uh, Mr. Freed brings up a good point, anyone who doesn't want to repair a sidewalk, their logical solution is, well, I'll just go to council and we'll get rid of it. So there has to be some kind of decision about continuity of the system. Do you want to have a continuous, uh, system? In this particular case, you have a continuous system that goes from the, um, from the waterfront, Flag Plaza, all the way back into the neighborhood. We have some blocks, and they are correct, where there's aged and, and sidewalks, some of it the city owns, that are gonna have to be replaced this year. We've been put on notice from the public and we're replacing those slabs of sidewalk also.
Across the street, where there is no sidewalk?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that ever a sidewalk?
I can't answer that question. I, I really don't know.
You could ask the homeowners, uh, was there, Ms. Kersey, was there a sidewalk in your recollection, recollection across the street?
Uh, that's home, I think, by the paper mill, I don't believe that there was sidewalk there, I'm 50 years old, in the neighborhood, but it's a long time ago.
Could I ask her a question?
But, but I really don't know.
Okay, um, Mayor Rep., if I may, uh, is your bottom line here, uh, this, Mr. Ms. Kersey, is it because you don't want to replace the sidewalk, or, or is, is, do you really want to make those improvements that you talked about?
We, we, it's twofold, we don't really want to replace the sidewalk, but we, we would like it to be a green space, because we, we like green space, and I'm not a really, um, proponent of large areas of cement or concrete, so we wouldn't, we would like to remove it and just do something green there.
Okay.
We, we, is also, in terms of just a vision for the future, it seems like there should be something other than a cut-and-dry five-foot-wide, uh, block of cement that allows people safely to move from one place to another, and I don't see that flexibility, um, in, at least not in the mandate that we receive, to even have time to research something that maybe if you were going to replace the five, uh, the sidewalk that is crumbling, and we definitely agree needs to be removed, no question about that. But maybe with something that would have some sort of thermal impact so that in the middle of the winter, rather than get out there with, you know, salt and snow, that in the, the sun, which there's an abundance of in that area, would actually warm the concrete and melt the sidewalk, and that's something, you know, if, rather than just cut-and-dry, replace a bland piece of sidewalk, we'd like, if we have to replace it, an opportunity in time to investigate alternatives that would be more green, if you will.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Mayor Rep.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember.
Is there opportunity for them to investigate, uh, how to make that sidewalk more green?
I'll let Mr. Clegg respond.
As your engineer, I have to be careful to be clear that, um, anything that is installed must comply with ADA standards. We're under federal mandates to assure that all sidewalks installed comply with ADA standards. And, um, while a green solution is certainly attractive from the pers, from the thought process, the question would be, how would you do that and assure that you have ADA accessibility? ADA accessibility requires very rigid, uh, cross-slope requirements, firmness of the surface requirements, uh, levelness requirements, and so on. And the city is, uh, has a significant potential liability by allowing anything to be installed in our public right-of-ways that do not comply with ADA standards.
Madam Mayor and council, if I could also add, um, I couldn't help but see we have the president of the Landlord Association here tonight, and I actually had the same conversation with him a few weeks ago about a crumbling sidewalk. There really is no compelling reason to overrule our ordinance on this, other than that we'd just rather not replace it. Unfortunately, I don't see as compelling enough reason, because what you're gonna have happen is every single broken sidewalk in the city, you're gonna be inundated with with requests simply to remove it for the cost aspect of it. And it would really undermine our entire walkability system and the, and the ordinance. So although I appreciate your request, I would recommend to the city council to deny it.
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Question for Bob. Just got to tell you to stay up there, but I want to interrupt people. This, what, is that three or four parcels there?
There are three.
What's the cost of replacing some, that part of the sidewalk there? It's got to be quite expensive.
It's five feet by about 175 feet.
So she has an answer.
What are your estimates?
$4,800.
There you go, $4,800. She has an estimate. I don't know what it would be if the, if our contractor would do it.
I was going to ask.
But we can, we could verify that for you.
Excuse me, he was one of the people that asked for the five, I believe it's the one who used five-square tree? It does city sidewalk.
Yeah, the city does get competitive bids and sometimes the cost under those competitive bids are a little bit better, but, but certainly our staff would be more than happy to give you an estimate of what it would cost for them to do.
So you're saying they could actually use the city's bid?
The citizens in the past have actually sent us letters and said, we saw the prices that you got for doing sidewalks. We would like to have you order us to do it and get it done for us. So we would just get it done that way for them. And since they're under direction now to do it, if that's what they wish, we can certainly give them, you know, if they have a lower cost option.
Right.
Certainly they should use it, but they can also find out what our cost is and if, if our costs are less, they could use that.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, councilmember.
Bob, is that something that if they didn't have the, and I don't try to question your finances or anything, if they didn't have the money upfront, is that something you could stick on the tax assessment to possibly spread that burden over a couple of years?
What we do in each and every case is after the repair is made in accordance with the ordinance is the property owner's bill if our vendor has to do the work. That's what the ordinance requires that we do. If the property owner does not pay that bill, then it is added as a special assessment and a special assessment bulk comes before council for approval.
Thank you. Now, I'm, I'm sorry, one more question. How many years do they get to pay that back? Is it three years?
I believe it's, it varies based on, and I'd really have to bow to our assessor on these questions, but my understanding is it depends somewhat on someone's age.
Wow.
I'm getting, I'm getting close to that age that I have more time.
So old is better? Did you have a question, councilmember?
Yeah, how did, how did this all come about? I mean.
A citizen filed a complaint through the Bureau of Public Information and Complaint, BPIC complaint. When that occurs, that's referred to our right-of-way agent. Our right-of-way agent goes to the site. They not, don't only look at that property, but they look generally in that block and see if there's any others that need repair. And then notifications go to the property owners of record asking them to repair it. In this particular case, we received that notice in November and we sent them the notice and in recognition of the time of the year it was, certainly waived the requirement until the spring. And then the spring, a letter was sent in March reminding them again as the construction season became available for them to make that repair. Once the city is placed on notice, there's potential liabilities and, and we want to, and it, and it requires us in the, in the ordinance is very specific. And it says that we are to stay after that until it's done and if it's, if it isn't done by the property owner, then we are to make it happen. And we make it happen.
Okay, I'm sorry. Have we had any conversation with the, the property owners other than a letter communication?
I, I do not know personally because I am not the person that would have spoken with them.
Oh, cool.
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer.
Oh, that's okay.
Rep?
Yes, councilmember Ruiz.
My thanks to Councilman Lewandowski for walking us down that path and providing a learning lesson. I think that's good and I'm also pleased that there are so many council questions asked and it's, it may be compelling that we make sure that we do ask questions so we can learn along the way and come to the same conclusion if that's what we happen to do. That's always important that we do that, no matter what the issue.
May I, may I add one additional thing, please?
Please do.
At times, our planning department has available for those that are financially challenged, grant funding to do sidewalk repairs. I don't know how much money they have at any given time, but anyone who's placed in this situation that finds themselves financially in a position that it's difficult for them to afford the repair, they can always go to our planning department and see what's available as far as grant funding for repairs. We're trying, we're working with a person just a couple of blocks away on that particular issue right now where the person is on a very fixed income and needs some assistance and we're trying to, the planning department is trying to work with them to help them out to make certain that there's something else out there also.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions from council? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
No.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, but I've been saying that I would certainly hope that the staff does work with them so that it doesn't become a burden to replace the sidewalk. I do under, I'd like to say no, but I do understand we do need to be, stick with continuity. So we'll move on to resolution number one.
Is authorizing 10 payments.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Resolution number six.
Is confirming and approving single lot special assessments for fines, assessments and/or the cost of removing blight, blighting factors and/or causes of blight as well as the abatement of nuisances.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Uh, just, just a comment, you know, I looked through this when we got our agenda and it's, there's quite an extensive list of these sites that are on there and as most councilmembers in the city of Port Huron do, you look around and stuff and I'm really surprised that some of these assessments that were from last year, these same people are going to be on the list again this year is the way things look already. And it's an ongoing process, it's a difficult process and sadly, we have to keep doing it and I don't know how we can stop this from reoccurring and reoccurring, but I'd be glad if the planning department or some of these other people would come up with some way to stop this from happening because I'm sure that half of the, half a dozen of names on that list are going to be on the next list, so. That's just my comment. I mean, it's just, it's sad to see.
Yep. Is there any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Move on to the first ordinance.
Is being given its first reading and is an ordinance to amend chapter 52 zoning, article three, district regulations, division one, generally, section 52 through 162 map of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the purpose of rezoning the properties located at 1122, 1120, 1104, 10th Avenue, 1307, 1303, 1215, 1209, 1203, Lincoln Avenue and 1119, Poplar Street from an A1 medium-density, multiple-family residential district, zoning district to an I institutional district, zoning district.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Thank you, we have a motion and support. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Chance we can do all three since they.
I'll relate to the same, I have no problem if anybody else does, no?
Oh.
Okay, then read them all and.
Number two is being given its first reading also and is an ordinance to amend chapter 52 zoning, article three, district regulations, division one, generally, section 52 dash 162 map of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the purpose of rezoning the properties located at 1209, 1203, 1308, 1314, 1210, 1214, Kearney Street and 1133, 1127, 1123, 1122, Poplar Street, 1134, 1126, 1124, 10th Avenue and 1123, 1119, 1131, Elk Street from an R1 single and two-family residential district, zoning district to an I institutional district, zoning district. Number three is also for its first reading and is an ordinance to amend chapter 52 zoning, article three, district regulations, division one, generally, section 52, 162, map of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the purpose of rezoning the single property located at 1441 Pine Grove Avenue from a C1 general business district, zoning district to an I institutional district, zoning district.
That was a little full. Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, you made the motion. Do you want to include them and is the second all right for you?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we'll make it for all three. Any discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Lewandowski got to you first.
I was just going to say it passed the planning commission unanimously with, I think it was six for seven to nothing.
Thank you, councilmember.
I was just going to make a historic comment. 1131 Elk Street was where my mother was born and raised, so another historic spot in Port Huron.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Concludes our regular agenda. There's several announcements. The 2015 Public Safety and Civilian Awards Recognition Ceremony will be held tomorrow night right here in the city council, council chambers at 6:00 PM. There will be a special meeting to discuss the budget on Wednesday of this week at 6:00 PM in conference room 408. And city offices will be closed on Monday, May 25th in observance of Memorial Day and the council meeting that would have been held then is now going to be held on Tuesday the next night, May 26th. The beautification commission is in need of volunteers to assist with preparing various flower beds for planting at the end of the month. If anyone's interested in helping on Saturday, May 16th, they need to meet in front of the courthouse at 9:00 AM or contact the clerk's office for more information. I also would just like to say I attended today the community forum that was held by Chief Reeves and Lieutenant Kish from the state police and Sheriff Donilon and it was very well attended, I thought, and a lot of conversation took place and I think that that's, was very good dialogue and I look forward to more being there so that the community is aware of what's going on and what work our police departments are doing, not just our own, but the sheriff's department and the state police. So, thank you, you did a good job.
Doesn't plan on doing any more. I know that one's in the afternoon, so. Oh, you are?
We will, we'll be hosting the call.
Oh, okay.
Is there anything else to bring before the council? Yes, councilmember.
Feast of St. Clair and Gus Macker basketball tournament Memorial Day weekend.
You're right, thank you. Yes, Feast of St. Clair is on Saturday and Sunday in Pine Grove Park and Gus Macker starts down in front of the new IMCA on Saturday and continues on Sunday. So there's two other events in our community that weekend. Anything else to bring before council? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Being adjourned.